So much for joining us for Tuesday, May 17th, City Council meeting. This is the Lewisville City Council and I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Just a quick announcement or two to get us kicked off, to call the meeting to order first. I just want to let everyone know our city manager was in an accident and he is getting surgery and recovering right now. So our acting city manager is Megan Davis with us this evening. So we're all wishing Jeff well and a speedy recovery to him. And he'll be joining us back as soon as he's back in action. And then just the other quick announcement, just want to thank President Fenberg and the representatives for passing 206, Senate Bill 206. That's the funding recovery bill for wildfire that will really help us with additional funds to be able to recover and restore. So if you see President Fenberg, please thank him and consider sending him a note. That's going to let us start working with state staff to figure out if we can get grant funding for things like use tax and building permit fees. So please stay tuned and thank you so much for your patience while we work on getting that information. With that, we'll call the meeting to order and ask City Clerk Muth for a roll call. Mayor Stolzmann, here. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fahy?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Most. Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion of the agenda this evening? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. And that takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on our agenda or items that appear on our consent agenda. Are there any members of the public that would care to comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening? First, we have Josh Cooperman. Just one moment, Josh, while we work on getting the Zoom interface. And just while we're doing that, I'll remind everyone, if you're in person, you can fill out a comment card to make a comment. And if you're logging in from Zoom, you can go ahead and click the raise hand feature that you'll find on the bottom of your panel. Every person, when they have a chance to talk, will get three minutes. So please tell us your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to tell us what you'd like to tell us this evening. And Josh, you should be able to speak now.
This is Josh Cooperman, Level 216 Griffith Street. I would like to make a comment about Consent Agenda Item D, the South Boulder Road at-grade crossing improvements. First of all, I would really just like to thank the city for working on these projects to improve pedestrian and bicyclist crossings along South Boulder Road. I'm really glad that the city prioritizes pedestrians and bicyclists. And when we incentivize people to walk and to bike, that means they don't drive. That produces less carbon dioxide and makes our air a little bit cleaner. I would also like to take the opportunity to say that there are some other locations which could also use pedestrian and bicyclist improvements. And I'd like to highlight two. One of them is also on South Boulder Road. So I'll go with that one first. And it's the intersection of South Boulder and Main Street. The city recently did some improvements, mostly on the south side of the intersection, which were quite good. But I would like to note, as I noted before, that the north side of the intersection could really use some work. In particular, there could be some more room on the north side of the intersection for people waiting to cross. And I believe that the railroad has moved their signaling box, so there's now more space on that side of the road. It would also be nice if it was easier for particularly bicyclists but also pedestrians to cross to the west side of the intersection from the north. And then the other thing about that intersection is the connection to Steel Road. It's really not ideal for bicyclists in particular. There are railings that really make, right by the railroad tracks, that make it really narrow for cyclists to get through. And the sidewalk connecting to Steel Road is also pretty narrow for cyclists to get through. The other place I would like to note is where the Powerline Trail meets Dillon Road. It would be great if we could have a crossing there in the style of the crossings we have in a few other places. For instance, in your package tonight, like the crossing that's proposed for South Boulder Road and Eisenhower, I believe it is. So yeah, I hope we can find some funding for those other projects. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next in the queue, we have Timothy LaFoley. We are working on getting you unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Okay, sorry. Timothy LaFoley, 951 St. Andrews Lane, Lewisville. I'm one of the Marshall Fire victims. I had sent email to the city council last Friday raising issues that we're running into with the building, that's identified during the building permit coding phase that really needs to be dealt with during design and architecture phase for water fixture counts and size of water lines coming in and whether you exceed a limit, the 30.0 limit for water fixture counts and being subject to the $41,800 water tap fee. I don't know if that email got to you folks, and it seems like information's gotten back to the Public Works Department, and they've been told to sort of work one-on-one with people as they come in with forms that sort of exceed the limits and try to work with us on a one-by-one basis. But I'm concerned about the number of homes that are going through the redesign, architecture, rebuild here that are going to run into this issue and whether they're going to have the bandwidth to be able to sort of work one-on-one with all the people coming through. And I'm wondering what the city council's stance is going to be on. Do we need to do some sort of exception thing here for the Marshall Fire rebuilt people that are getting impacted, running into this limit? Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the queue, we have Tanya Swamuru.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Okay, hi. I'm from 944 Larksboro Lane in Corner Stone. I lost my home in the Marshall Fire. I want to really encourage city council to consider working on or telling the public what you plan to do about either passing Wilderness Urban Interface Code or making official recommendations for our rebuild. The permits are trickling in now, and let's see. We have, you know, the only thing I've heard from city council is that there's no intention to pass any official code. So we are at the point where we're picking roofs and exteriors for our homes. Many of us would like to rebuild fire resistant, and it seems like the most likely recommendations that would come about would be not very impactful for cost, for our budget. But I'm really disconcerted that nothing prevents my next-door neighbor or discourages him from rebuilding, say, a log cabin surrounded by juniper trees. Indeed, my next-door neighbor has said to me, "The fire was a fluke. It's ridiculous. We don't need to do any fire-resistant rebuilding." I want to say, the neighborhood, my neighborhood is, I mean, you could, if you wanted to think about the public interest, you know, the neighborhoods that are closest to the grassland are sort of a fire break for the rest of the city. The only reason the rest of Lewisville is still standing is because the wind stopped that day. Nothing could have really stopped the fire at the pace when it came through my neighborhood, unless fewer structures catch on fire if a grass fire were to ignite again. So we have a lot of focus in the city on ecological building, rebuilding. But I just want to point out that there are even greater gains to be had for making sure that houses don't burn down in future fire, because rebuilding a house is a huge carbon footprint, period. I also want to point out that many of us don't have options to rebuild fire resistance because we have covenants and PUC rules about our fences. There's a lot of discussion across the Marshall Fire, the Lewisville Marshall Fire victims about what are they going to do about their fences, because almost everybody's required to build wooden ones. And really, this is something that we would love to engage with council to address. This is something that we need to address. We're struggling to do on our own by changing our covenants and so forth. It probably takes some council action. So please put this on a future council agenda, and please engage with us about this. Please continue to engage with us, period, actually. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And that takes us through all our public comments on agenda, comments on items that are not on our agenda, which takes us to our consent agenda this evening. Any discussion on consent agenda, Mayor Protem Maloney?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, and if I get a second, I'd like to make some comments.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the consent agenda, Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. I fully support the items that are on the consent agenda, and I hope that my colleagues will also approve those. But I do have some caution with what we're about to approve. So for example, item number D, Contract for South Boulder Road Grade Improvements is something that was talked about in the public comments. This project is roughly $1 million over budget. It's something, it's a health and safety issue. It's something we tried to address when we had the ballot issue about the underpasses. But I think because of the amount of traffic, the distance crossing the road for bikes and pedestrians is something we absolutely are obligated to do, in my opinion. So I want to point out, though, that to me, that's one of the things, it's one of the reasons why we have reserves. And then we have E, when we're talking about reinstalling water for all of the homes that were burned during the Marshall Fire with water meters and all the facilities. There is a question of how much the insurance and FEMA will cover of that $1 million cost. So I think we need to be thinking about, you know, reserves will be paying for that as well. So I think it's prudent just to know that, and it's something to watch and something to be aware of. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The consent agenda is approved. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. So just for folks that this might be their first meeting or haven't tuned in before, people can say anything they want to during public comment period. It's a time for people to tell us anything they want to, but we don't have a dialogue because those things aren't on our agenda. But just quickly, we have a program that's been developed over time with lots of community input on how our water tap fees are charged to ensure that we can supply enough water to everyone in the community, that we have enough water rights and enough infrastructure to pay for it. And so our Public Works Department is implementing the program and hasn't flagged that there'll be any kind of need to address it at this time, but they're continuing to monitor it and look at that. And so they are working one-on-one with anybody who has questions or comments at this time. And then just on the Wildland Urban Interface, just to clarify, the city council gave direction at a meeting earlier this year to staff to look at a voluntary Wildland Urban Interface Code and to bring that back and bring back any information about grant revenue that could support incentivizing that code. And so staff's working diligently on that. We really can't have a conversation without information and background for council members to make a decision based on. And so we really need to wait for the staff to do that work to have further discussion on it. And when they get that done, they will bring it back for our discussion. And then just the last point is on fences, and the staff are looking very hard at fences and how we can address that most appropriately. There are a number of issues around fences that community members have raised, and they all, the staff also need time to work through that topic before council can have a meaningful discussion on it. So please do continue to reach out to your council rep, to any of us on council, if you don't feel comfortable reaching out to your rep or to your neighborhood liaisons that the council have been assigned. Everybody's happy to meet with people off-site or outside of office hours, and sometimes that's more productive than the three-minute comment period. And also, three-minute comments are excellent as well. So you're welcome to continue to make those also. Thank you so much. Any other council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda? Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have a few updates around the Marshall Fire that I wanted to share with you this evening. First, I'll start with PPDR, the Private Property Debris Removal. So we have 26 crews that are out now and four more crews that are going to be coming this week. We have about 94 active parcels here in the city of Lewisville with activity on about nine of the 21 runways. And that's everything from marking trees to actually starting to initiate removal in the range of that activities. There's been a little bit of a change in the process. We heard some feedback, and there were some notification issues that Boulder County was having with the contractor. And so there's a new process in place that we communicated out to residents who are impacted last week. We also have information about that on our website, so people can take a look at that. The new process is that property owners will receive at least five days of notification when crews are anticipated to come out to their site to work versus the 24 to 48 hours previously indicated for notice. Advanced walkthroughs are no longer being offered. However, site visits with property owners will now be handled when the debris removal crews are deployed to the site and have started working on site. So program participants will be able to be there on site to observe the operations beginning and speak with the project representatives about the work that's taking place. Property owners with specific concerns about their site and requests for items to remain like trees and plants and landscaping, that all should be noted in their right-of-entry form. So if anyone has updates, you can still make updates prior to the debris removal. So those right-of-entry forms will be reviewed with the property owners during that phone call five days before the work. So they'll have a chance to really go through what's in there and say, "Oh, I want you to include this" or "Take this out." So hopefully, this will help provide a little bit better notification and a little more engagement so that the property owners have a better awareness of when things are happening and they can share their desires. The other thing I would like to share is that there is a new sort of dashboard, I guess, or a tracking sheet around the debris removal. So any resident can see exactly what runway is active at this time and at what stage they're in. And you can see your individual address and see whether any debris removal has been initiated. I would also like to share that the first permit was issued by the city of Lewisville last week for Marshall Fire-impacted residents. And so we're really very pleased to see the rebuilding begin. And that means that all three now of the impacted communities have active permits for rebuilding. So it's really a great, great week to know that people are starting that, that work. I just wanted to mention that there is a navigator program that's being developed for all residents who have been impacted by the Marshall Fire. And this will also be a portal or a way for residents to connect with any additional state and federal funding. So that contract is being finalized to get the navigators onboard and hired. And this is a place where residents will be able to come to get assistance with insurance issues, to be connected to other services like legal services, financial assistance, other funding sources like the CDBGDR funding will also be made available through the navigator portal. So as that program gets set up and running, we'll make sure to push out a lot of information so people know how to get connected. And then finally, I wanted to just mention that staff are working on FAQs around, as the mayor mentioned, our fees and tap fees and use taxes, just so that people can see all of that information that we have available about how those are developed and utilized in one place. So we hope to have that available later this week or early next week, and we'll again post that and make sure that people can easily find that on the webpage. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you so much for that report. If we have any quick questions, Councilmember Fahy?
I just have one quick question. The navigator program that you were referencing, is that the one through Boulder County?
Correct.
Foundation?
Yes, correct. It's jointly funded between Boulder County and the Community Foundation.
Okay. Thank you. So, but we can get information about that from the city or through?
We will. So right now, the contract is being finalized. When the program is up and running and we have information about how people can connect to a navigator, we'll be sure to push that out. We'll have it on the Marshall Fire webpage easily so people can get link to those navigator services.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Great question. Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Acting City Manager Davis. I want to compliment the staff on the Marshall Fire webpage and resources that are out there. I'm looking at it right now. Shows 550 businesses and homes had lost their properties and 447 debris removal permits issued. That's pretty astounding. The question I have about that, if you know, does that mean that the ones that the county, under the county program, they've issued permits for all of those and the remaining ones are the ones that'll be done privately?
Yeah, that's correct. I'm not sure if all of the PPDR permits have been processed, but we decided to go ahead and issue those as quickly as we could because we found that the PPDR process was kind of jumping around a little more than we expected. And that way, we had permits in place for all of those properties. And then, of course, some individuals who aren't participating in the PPDR have already come in, and then that balance would be either those who haven't come in individually or I'm not sure if there's any left from the PPDR yet that we haven't gotten in.
The dashboard is a nice way to see how our community is recovering. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And that takes us to our regular business this evening. Our first item of regular business is Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month Proclamation for June 2022. I just want to open by saying that, you know, at this time, it's as important as ever, if not more important than ever, that we do clearly stand and show support for one another. All across the country, there are acts of discrimination and hate, and there's violence happening pretty well daily against communities of color, and all kinds of terrifying things are happening in our country. So it is so important that as local government, that we can stand together and use our political speech to make it clear that we stand with one another and we support one another in the community regardless of our background. And so I'll let other council members make any comments they'd like to, and then I'll read the proclamation for Pride Month, and then we will vote on it. And then just before I turn it over to council members, I want to let everyone know that they're invited to a community celebration of flag-raising at 5:30 on June 1st. And it's right outside City Hall, and I hope to see everyone there. Any other council members have comments on the Pride Month proclamation? All right, thank you, everyone. And so I will read it. Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month Proclamation for June 2022. Whereas the city of Lewisville recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2022 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the city. And whereas the city of Lewisville observes Pride Month with a flag-raising ceremony to honor the history and ongoing work of the LGBTQ liberation movement. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community members are important contributing members of the Lewisville community. And whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements to advocate for LGBTQ people in society. And whereas the nation was founded on the principle that all people have the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness under the protection of the law. And whereas the city of Lewisville is committed to supporting the rights of all citizens to live and work openly and authentically and supports the visibility, dignity, and equality of LGBTQ people in our community. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue, to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and advance equal human rights. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city of Lewisville hereby proclaims June 2022 as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ community. Be it further resolved that the rainbow pride flag will be raised on June 1st, recognizing all LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions make Lewisville a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. The city of Lewisville celebrates and respects the enduring efforts and ongoing contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities and reaffirms the city's dedication to continue building a shared culture of inclusiveness and acceptance. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. It's unanimously proclaimed. And that takes us to Agenda Item B on our discussion this evening, which is Discussion and Direction on the Future Highway 42 Study. We'll have a staff presentation from our Public Works Director Kurt Kower. Good evening, Kurt.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to do a little setup here. Oh, yeah, thanks. So tonight, we want to talk to you about the Future 42 Corridor, Connecting People in Places. This is an endeavor that we started off as a city about a year and a half ago, thinking about it and going through Dr. Cog's applications to get some funding to do his study and partnering with the city of Lafayette to review our corridor and kind of determine what is the long-term efforts that'll determine how that corridor grows up. Through that process, we've had several public meetings. We've had an online public meeting. We've had in-person public meetings. We've had stakeholder meetings with Lafayette, CDOT, Boulder County, various commercial folks and many people through this process. Through that, we got input on their thoughts on this corridor. And also, along with getting that input, we also did a lot of technical analysis on this corridor to measure different levels of effectiveness. Those levels of effectiveness that we measured are things such as bicycle comfort, walking comfort, efficiency of moving automobiles through the corridor, various things of how this corridor will operate for all the users involved. Right now, as we all know, this is, of course, very automobile-focused. It's not really accessible to other modes. And as we move to the future with different technologies such as electric bikes and electric vehicles, transit, all these various uses, how do we get all these users to interface together? So we have a lot of technical data here tonight. I don't necessarily want to dive into that, but it's here if you want to. What I want to say is we reviewed various alternatives, to be specific, three. We mixed and matched different types of intersections such as roundabouts or protected intersections that are focused on prioritizing bikes, all the way just to your normal intersection. We reviewed bike lanes that are both buffered, like we have in many places in the city, like Cherry and Pine Street. We looked at protected bike lanes, both one-way in each direction or trying to save space in cases having a two-way protected bike lane. So how much space do we need as far as width in this cross-section? And then what are the impacts to things such as property and right-of-way? And what do we need to design to moving forward? Through all that hodgepodge of things, we took the input, we took the technical analysis, we took the professional experts' judgment on what the best balance is. And out of that, we came with a recommended alternative. And that recommended alternative is for the long term of this project. This is a project that's going to build out over five, 10, maybe 15 years, and then it should service your community for 50 to 100 years. We came up with an alternative that we suggest that the council adopt a plan in the future that will implement protected bike lanes in each direction. It will maintain two lanes of roadway in most of the corridor. That corridor that we looked at went from Lock Street all the way up to Arapahoe, north-south. But this area between Pine and South Boulder Road is an area that there was enough traffic and there's enough interaction with intersections that we would move to a four-lane section there. So with that comes various consequences, various pieces of right-of-way that we'll have to work out and partner with people along the corridor to work out how that all grows. But before you is kind of a rough image of what the four-lane section looks like. This happens to have what would be just a normal bike lane shoulder, and then you can see where we put in an underpass at South Street. So this corridor did also consider underpasses at South Street and at South Street going east to west, continuing the South Street underpass from the railroad. It also considered a underpass at South Boulder Road near the Burger King to establish a good north-south connection to keep pedestrians from having to cross the street. Little image of what that protected bike lane would look like. Essentially, you've got your two lanes of travel there. You'd have a landscape section. You'd have a bike lane. You'd have like a dividing area, and then you have like a multi-use trail. So in general, that's what we're recommending to you. And I'm going to stop there. Next steps on all that, I won't stop there, but next steps on all this is after we discuss this tonight and kind of close out this check-in with city council, if we're on the same page, then we would move towards a final plan that summarizes all this into a document, and we would bring that to city council to adopt that. And then that adoption would support future endeavors through Dr. Cog's applications or other maybe federal grant funding. So now I will stop there and kind of open it up to all of you.
Thank you. So let's take public comment on this agenda topic this evening. If any members of the public would care to comment, please raise your hand at this time. First in the queue, we have Mark Cathcart.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Director Kower, and Deputy City Manager. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Director Kower, and Deputy City Manager Attorney. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I'm Mark Cathcart. I live at 1763 Sweet Clover Lane. I have to apologize for not coming on my bike tonight. I've totally screwed up my back at the moment. So, I've cycled in probably, on probably every continent in the world. I've cycled in two cities in China, in Australia, in Sydney and Melbourne, all over the place, even in East Berlin, when it was still East Berlin. I have to say, CO2 42, as it currently stands, isn't the worst road I've cycled on, but it's far from best. So, whatever we end up with as the final design for this, I certainly encourage you to do everything you can to, you know, to get this separated bike lane adopted. I was unable to participate in the last public meeting for it, but we did. I did with David Blankensop from the Open Space Committee, participate in almost all the others. I have to say, the outreach was excellent, even if the options that we got from the consultants were bewilderingly confusing when it comes to, you know, choice isn't always a great thing, especially when it comes to junctions. So, you know, the next phase, I think I'd like to at least see diagrams of actually how the consultants and Dr. Cog and whoever envisages cyclists actually taking the junctions, right? I mean, it's one thing to put it on paper, but if you're going to make the cyclists go here, stop, go here, stop, go here to get across, and there, when there's a roundabout, they're not going to take it. So, this is really important. I don't know of another project around here. I actually used that road where my back's not screwed up. I actually used that road to go out to Arapahoe and up to Hygiene fairly frequently. I know I've got three or four direct neighbors that do as well. So, we're all in for this. We'd really like to see it happen, but we really would like to see some specific examples of how the junctions are going to work before they're committed. You know, the choice, it was, there were 145 questions on the last survey. It was, you know, I know lots of people that gave up. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Cynthia Corn.
Cynthia, you're speaking, but we can't hear you. We're showing your microphone, and it's showing that you're speaking, but we're not getting any sound coming through.
Cynthia, we are going to try taking another panelist, and we'll come back to you. So, sorry about that. If you could try logging back into Zoom, it may correct itself. There's also the toll-free number that you can dial in on your phone if you'd like to make comment that way, and you can dial *6, and we'll see a hand appear for you. Next, we have Josh Cooperman. Oh, okay. So, there appears to be a technical issue with us in the room hearing you all on Zoom. So, we will take a five-minute recess and reset our Zoom and see if we can correct it. And if we cannot, I apologize. The way that we have listed the agenda, though, does state that you're welcome to attend remotely, but if there are technology issues that prevent remote participation, we're going to continue the in-person meeting. So, I apologize for that. We'll take this five-minute recess at 6:34. So, we'll get started again at 6:39, and we hopefully will have corrected the audio issue.
Testing one, two. Can you hear me?
Josh Cooperman, if you can hear us, can you try speaking, please?
Megan Pierce, can you speak to us?
Hi, speaking now.
Thank you.
I think it comes from, like, Swedish shirts. Are we not?
You can hear a sound.
It's not making the little microphone noise. Josh, can you try speaking? City Clerk Muth, can you try muting him and unmuting him? Cynthia, if you're still on, we're going to try unmuting you and seeing if we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We sure can. All right. Cynthia, why don't you go ahead and tell us what you'd like to tell us?
Sure. Thank you. So, I live at 438 Jefferson Avenue, and my husband and I own a property at 1440 Cannon Street. So, it's about a half a block off of Highway 42. I really appreciate the number of years, years and months that have gone into this discussion. The council members who have been around for a while certainly know that. I appreciate the comments about bicycle lanes. My view of this particular stretch from Pine to South Boulder Road has been that it's a school lane, and that as Broomfield develops further south of 470, and Lafayette fills up a lot of its land on the northern edge, I don't feel like it's the obligation of the city of Louisville, or the state of Colorado, or the county of Boulder to accommodate 45, 55 mile-an-hour speed zones when we have a middle school. We have people going to Centaurus High School. It's a wonderful place to live in Old Town, where kids can ride bikes to school. And I think we, I need more time to look at the options. A four-lane route with buffered bicycle lanes doesn't seem particularly creative for what we need in this area that has ball fields and is such a main part of our town. So, I would encourage the council to give this additional study. Think about it from a school routes standpoint as the number-one priority for that area. So, thank you very much. Really appreciate. And I see that you're all mostly there in person, so good for all of you.
Thank you. Next, we have Don.
Yes, we can. Don 3557 Augusta Lane, Louisville. I would just like to ask that the city council, in all their planning for bicycle routes, consider physically separating bicycles and motorists with barriers that would be safe for the bicycles. That's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I know that the Highway 42 project is a fairly long-term project, but I'd like to express some general preferences about the project, very much in line with the previous speakers. So, I would ask that we really prioritize pedestrians and bicyclists along the whole of Route 42. I know that, you know, at the moment, pedestrians and bicyclists are not the primary users of Highway 42, but that is at least in part because it's very unpleasant for bicyclists and pedestrians. And if we could make it more pleasant, then we could hopefully reduce the number of cars on it and increase the number of people walking and biking along it. I would be very much in favor of trying to keep the road to two lanes. I really don't want to see it go up to four. You know, it's right next to Old Town. I think a four-lane road there would not be, would not fit with the small-town sort of character of Old Town. And it's not clear to me that we really need four lanes, and I wouldn't want to have to shrink it later on, like via Appia. I'd also like to say, I'm generally in favor of roundabouts over stoplights, and I'm very much in favor of underpasses, especially at South Boulder Road, and then also at South Street to get to the ball fields and the open space on the other side. I also think it would be great if we could lower the speed limit, particularly where the road is next to town. I think the speed limit is currently 45, which seems excessive to me. I would think nothing more than 35, if not lower. And then, the last point I'd like to make is when we eventually get to redoing the roads, please don't put in any excess road. There are a lot of large medians along 42 at the moment that just take up space and take up heat and don't do any good. So, if we're going to have medians, please plant them with native species. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments on this topic, we'll take it for council questions and comments. Any council discussion on this topic? Mayor Protamalani.
How come nobody else raises their hand right away? You know, I, first, I want to thank staff for the work on this. And, you know, I was talking with the acting city manager today about the 86 slides we're in the presentation. I appreciate all of the steps that we've gone through as a city. And as some of the public comment noted, you know, I've only been on council for six and a half years, and long before I got on council, there was discussions about what do we do about Highway 42 and the traffic. So, you know, I am thrilled we're at the point now where we have a 15% design. It's something that I absolutely support. You know, I know that between the two public forums, the consultants we hired, the traffic engineers we have on staff, we're absolutely moving in the right direction, and we're setting ourselves up for an application with Dr. Cog and federal resources and so forth. I think that's very, very important. The graphic that you have up right now showing the separation of the bike lanes, there's a reason why, unless it's Sunday morning, I do not ride on 42. It's because it's crazy. And if you do it between 3:00 and 6:00 any day of the week, it's not a place to be. But this will make it bike-friendly. It'll make it walking-friendly, and I think that's something that's absolutely important, because as you go beyond South Boulder Road to the north, it connects with trails and, you know, other avenues. So, this is something I strongly support, and I hope that my colleagues join me in supporting this and moving forward. And thank you for the staff recommendation and all the work on this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mayor Protam. I just want to echo the comments that you made. I very much support the staff recommendation here. I think the, it's clear that, you know, we have a serious issue when it comes to pedestrian and bike safety in this area. We also have an issue with capacity of the road. I think making, you know, one of the things that I've been very passionate about on council has been sort of right-sizing our roads to make sure that they are, you know, calibrated to the amount of traffic that they have, and to make sure that we have accessible bike lanes and pedestrian safety measures in place. And I think this plan does those things. So, I appreciate the staff's work here. I appreciate the Mayor Protam's comments, and I wholeheartedly support with staff moving forward with this plan.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you. So, am I right in assuming that currently you guys are leaning towards Alternative 1, and that, are you looking for direction from us, whether we think, because I'm hearing, we like the plan, but am I understanding the plan?
Just, I'll make that clarification for everybody who's watching at home. There is an item in the packet called Recommended Alternative, which is not Alternative 1, 2, or 3. It's a hybrid that came together from the public comments that were received on Alternative 1, 2, and 3. So, there's an attachment that's just called RECalt, and that is basically that picture that Director Kower had on the screen that had the planted bike lane. So, there's plantings between the bike lane, and it's here, this rendering here. So, it's basically that. But then, in that RECalt attachment, you can really zoom in to each different intersection.
And as we're trying to review images, I want to emphasize, we're more at like a 5% design level. Some of the comments about filling in the blanks. We need to kind of get to this recommended, so we can fill in more detail, and then we can review that together with the council at this adoption phase.
Did it go back to the, is it page 1?
Yeah, it's on page 173.
Of the full packet or the link?
Forty of the links.
Thanks. Bear with me as I'm just trying to get caught up here. Forty.
And I'll go to Councilmember Fahey while you look that over just for a minute. Councilmember Fahey.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to also thank staff for a wonderful presentation and a lot of good effort that's gone into this project. I agree with the photo here looks wonderful. I love having the separated bike lane and pedestrian lane. I would go along with Mr. Cooperman's suggestion that those areas that are planted be planted in native things, plants, and that they be ones that don't get very tall, so that they don't block your sight line. But other than that, I think this would be excellent. Thank you.
Councilmember Dick, we'll skip over Councilmember Dickinson and go to Councilmember Light. We'll come back to you, though. Don't you worry.
Yeah, I actually raised my hand on the Zoom feature. Wrong way to get attention on the dais. Old habits die hard.
I actually don't see your name in the panel.
Well, I put it down, because I wasn't making any headway.
Sorry about that.
No, it's no big deal. I'm just getting used to this. I wanted to say thanks both to staff and all the people, current, former council members, and the public that, and the consultants that helped us with this. This is a huge undertaking over a long time. I know that the mayor has an even longer time with 42 corridor stuff than I do, and I'd be very interested to hear what her comments are going to be on this. But one of the things that I really appreciate is the degree to which we did get public comment, and the degree to which it was taken into account in the option that we have, which is kind of the magic of that. It doesn't always happen, but here it did. And so, I very much support this. I think it's going to be a terrific amenity. I think it's the balance of pedestrians and cyclists and vehicles that are and vehicles that are traveling there. I think will be, will serve us for a long time to come. And I think it's going to serve the interests of safety in a way that's really going to make that a lot more popular. And I guess I'm anticipating that it will get used a lot more than it obviously has in the past. So thanks. We look forward to seeing more.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, thanks for your patience. So, I mean, what it, is it, I was looking at like each intersection and then the different road options and kind of figuring that a road option sort of had to go with an intersection option as the bike paths are coming into that intersection in a certain way. But looking at that page 40, recommended alternative, it kind of looks to me like it's option one with the, or alternative one with the roads, you know, with the separated bike, but then kind of alternative two with the intersections. They seem like kind of the typical intersections with less bump out. Is that accurate? I'm just trying to understand which intersections you guys are leaning towards right now.
So the intersections we're leaning towards are signalized intersections in some areas where we can provide protected intersections to prioritize the bikes. We're providing those. Those are at the lesser intersections. At intersections such as like South Boulder Road and 42, that's more of a normal intersection. We have to do that because of the timing it takes when you delay and prioritize bikes. We can't move all the vehicles through different phases such as left turns and all that. And that is also part of why you see us go from two lanes to four lanes from Pine Street to South Boulder Road is to support these intersections, moving traffic through. It's not necessarily being made wider to go faster or more cars. It's more that there's several signals in this area, and we need that room to queue cars up and then move them efficiently through all the different phases. So to answer your question, that's kind of how we're going through here is protected where we can, normal intersections where we can't, protected bike lanes. And then we provide the great separation with the underpasses at these busier connection points.
Okay, well, I appreciate that further clarification. I guess I had my brain kind of an all-or-nothing approach to the intersection. So that's helpful to understand that. And yeah, again, I'm understanding the idea of getting more lanes in these high-traffic areas just to actually keep things flowing. As you see, it's a funny thing to pull up to intersections like Dillon and 95th where it's like, no, it's okay. We're supposed to get in two lanes and then merge again. That's the whole, we spend a lot of money making extra lanes so that it eases that traffic moment. It's not being a jerk and taking the extra lane. It's literally the design, right? And so I understand that through here, that the design is to keep traffic flowing more consistently through here and less merging and unmerging rapidly in these little spaces. So that makes sense. The underpass, obviously, would be a fantastic addition. But yeah, in general, I like the separated bike path from the traffic. So I'm in full support of where you guys are headed right now. I love it. And thanks for helping me understand it a little better.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I also support the separated bike way. I think that this is so much safer than what we have now. It really, it really is a risky highway right now, and it is a community highway. And so having that separate, like physical separation with the greenery, and I'm really supportive of having that be the native plantings that does absorb heat and it does, you know, take a little bit of water, but not a ton of water. So we need to think about making sure the vegetation is good for pollinators, low on herbicide use, still helps us with the cooling effects. But the separation with the greenery is fantastic. And I think that will make it so a lot more users feel, you know, comfortable taking this route. Right now, the detour is either to stay on Main Street or to go far to the east through the open space on the gravel trail. And so if you have a road bike, you can't really go on the gravel trail. So this is really fantastic for helping us to get more commuters able to take their bikes everywhere. And then the multi-use path is something I haven't heard a lot of comment about. But to have that sidewalk that's a little bit bigger and a little further from the road will make it so that people can actually use the sidewalk. And right now, on the east side, there's no sidewalk, like there's no way to go from the open space on that side at all. So pedestrians will get a much better experience also. The underpasses are great, and I think they will reduce the risk in the really high-risk area. So that's great that we're thinking of the most vulnerable users first. I really appreciate that. I just, the only thing I'll add, so it sounds like there's unanimous agreement on the recommended alternative and having you bring that back to us formalized. The only thing I'll add is I think it's really important to try to get advancement in this funding cycle at Dr. Cog. And so, I'm sorry, I'm only hesitating because I don't know what to call Megan. City Manager Davis. And I met with CDOT and talked about, you know, where this is in their 10-year plan. Costs keep going up, everybody. I mean, every single time we look at a transportation project, the costs keep going up. Every delay we make on this project, this project we used to have in for a lower number, and I don't even want to say what it was because of what it is now, but it's an order of magnitude different than what it used to be. And so just continuing to delay just makes it harder and harder for us to do things because our revenue sources don't grow at the rate that these costs are going up by any means. And so we really need to get it in this Dr. Cog cycle. So I think that will mean separating parts of the project and trying to get the parts we can into this cycle. So if we can get, you know, right-of-way acquisition in, if we can get some of the work on the bikeway in, if we could get any of the underpasses in as pieces that CDOT would partner with us, I think that would be fantastic. And I think we should also give direction as a council to our faithful representative to the LRC to take this to them and make sure they're aware of the project. This is really critical to the revitalization area, too, to just make sure they're aware of the project, that, you know, that we're partners in this. If they can help provide funding, that that will help us get more CDOT funding. So the more we can bring to the table, the more outside federal funding and CDOT funding we can get, and the more viable our project is. So if we could just add those funding pieces to our direction and the recommended alternative, I think we're good to go.
I see a lot of head nodding. Is that okay with everybody? All right. Director Kower, do you need any other direction on this topic tonight?
I do not. You've been crystal clear. Thank you.
City Manager Davis, do you need any other direction on this topic tonight?
No, thank you for the input.
All right. Thanks, everybody. And so that takes us to our next agenda topic, which is discussion direction on parks and median projects. And so Director Kower will give us a staff presentation.
So this one, we will dive into some slides, and I hope we have some in-depth Q and A. There's a lot of expectations around, out there around all these topics we're about to discuss. And so your input's good so that we can gather it and then try to respond to that with some actionable items out of this presentation. So a little bit of background. This first slide here is just for your reference on your own time, but this is the straw of a global map. And you can kind of see the bright white lines where you have really active areas in the city. So this is basically your trail system. One important area I want to highlight up here is where we did put in an underpass in the last several years. And you can just see how critical these connections are as we talk about them and you make investments in your trail systems. This is kind of our approved CIP we're working around right now. We're working on Cottonwood Park that's finishing up. If you've been over there, we've got some new playground equipment that's been installed. Majority of the area's been opened up. There's still a small area with a new zip line that's going to be done in the next week or two. But just as a baseline, Cottonwood Park and those basic systems we put in there was about a $400,000 project. We, as we jump into this Parks Playground Equipment Program, traditionally have been budgeting around $150,000 a year for each park. Most of these parks are, you know, they're different sizes, but the areas of the playground equipment are kind of the same. So you can see, and as we jump into this, we'll talk about what range of budgeting should we be doing to determine what kind of experiences we want to kind of build towards. And maybe there's a phased plan. So jumping from there, I'm going to jump into the playgrounds and talking about experiences. Here are, if you really went out and looked at what it takes to build a park, you have different categories of parks, from pocket parks up to huge community parks. Obviously, they come with different dollar figures. What we're talking about here are neighborhood parks today. And those dollar figures, as we just discussed, Cottonwood Park's $400,000. You can get really customized. You can really make broad differences in the park, not just in the playground. And you could get up to $500, $750, or a million dollars. So we need to be thinking about, you know, what does that mean for the experience you may want to provide strategically? And then what does that mean for how we do that over the long term with the available revenues? These are just a picture to kind of give everyone a feel, to get us kind of bookended. The lower dollar figure here is Cottonwood Park. That's the $400,000. And as you kind of go to the different squares, you jump up in those increments of $500, $750, and a million. You can get in a really customized nature play-type systems that do a lot of integration with the park, with grading, with irrigation, with the experience. But basically, you have basic play systems that you'll just order out of a catalog. You might just get more of a premium play system, higher-end materials or different aesthetics, more sensory-type experiences possibly out of that. Then you can move to playgrounds that are kind of themed, where the whole playground has a theme. Like this one is a playground that's kind of got a railroad theme. And then again, as you get to the higher end and kind of the newer, more modern approach of the nature play. You can stop me at any point in this conversation. We can do this Q and A. No bad questions tonight. Another thing you can think of as far as if you look around how parks can be put together, especially how you see a lot of the more modern parks being put together, you can have turf areas, which are your basic lawn-type turf approach, where you might have athletic fields or just a spot to put a blanket and have a picnic. But you can also, right in that same area, have a more native approach with lesser needs for water, maybe lesser needs for maintenance. It's not as refined, but you still get a good aesthetic out of it. You may also want to do things like little mounds and stuff to create some interest. You know, look at most of our parks. Well, going into an example, this is a park over in Lafayette. And so they have some areas you can see that are turf, which are like the lighter yellow. And then they have play areas where they have the different systems, which are orange. And then this kind of brown area is more the native. So you can see how these different components can come together to create some visual interest. If you look at the kind of parks we're approaching over the next few years, we have like smaller play areas with a lot of turf. And so those are just considerations. We have great parks here, and not suggesting there needs to be a change. But if you're trying to balance costs with maintenance and all these things, then you can think about these different interactions. At Cottonwood, this is an area where we just put in the playground. But here, it just happens to be a grassy area with kind of a dirt spot that's out there. And so you could take some of these more native type treatments and apply them in that area. And then suddenly, you've got maybe a more usable area, more aesthetic area. And so it comes down to kind of small details in some of this. You can plop down the equipment, but it's also the details you do around it, like the footprints in the concrete or hidden things throughout the park to make it more curious for the kids. So schedule we're on as we start to talk about budget, and this is kind of a map of areas where we're targeting, circles one, two, three, four, and five, where we'll be working. We're working in Community Park, which is eight right now. We're not here to talk about the rec center or Memory Square at this point. But we're just proposing, Cottonwood's about to finish up in the next few weeks. Community Park, we're working on now with some lofty goals for June 1, and then some work to continue thereafter for irrigation and different refinements in that area around the irrigation pond and some fencing at the dog park. Then we're going to look at working with our internal staff, and we're also issuing an RFP to work with a landscape consultant to go through a process for Joe Carnival and Meadows. We'll start those this year and hope to finish them spring-ish of next year. And then later this year in the fall, we'll start the process for Enclave and Sunflower and finish those later next year, kind of Q3, Q4. We just kind of push Enclave and Sunflower out so that we can get debris removal out of the way in the burn areas. These two parks are in the burn areas. They experienced damage. And we don't want to be trying to put new, nice equipment or landscaping in there where there's a lot of activity around it that may take away from it. So the process, we will follow on that. It's a process, I think, that we followed historically within the city. But tonight, hopefully, we can set some target levels of the experiences we want to work towards or phase into, design some concepts around those things, do some public outreach, bring you a final design with a bid amount, and just go get these things built. That's all, both our goals. But if we don't have the right amount of funding, we can't meet the experiences you want, vice versa. So we got to kind of close this gap. This is just Cottonwood Park. I have a slide for each part, so we don't have to dive into each part. I'll probably, at this point, pause and let's talk a little bit about what I've just told you, how you feel about that, and go from there.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Director Kower. I appreciate, I appreciate this conversation. You've highlighted some really interesting parks, I think, on here. I know that folks are really in favor of sort of the, some of the nature scape-type parks. Maybe I'm using the wrong words. But I'm thinking specifically about like, in Broomfield, they have McKay Park.
McKay Lake, yep.
Yeah, McKay Lake, near McKay Lake. And they have some really interesting kind of built-in slides and, you know, where the rocks and the playground kind of, and the trees and whatever kind of all come together. I thought the park that you highlighted in Lafayette was also a very good example because of the way that that mixes sort of the nature as well as the turf. And that's a really interesting and great, great park. So, you know, I'd really be in favor, as we think of it, just sort of as a general comment, right? As we think about redesigning these parks, you know, I'd love to see kind of a high-end option that includes, if it's a high-end option, you know, options that include those nature scape-type elements that, and then we as council can decide sort of, do we have the money for this at any given time? But I'd love to be presented with that because I think that's what, that's what a lot of folks would really appreciate.
Mayor Protamalani?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council Brown, for your comments. He's an expert because he has kids. I'm not an expert. But I believe, you know, in talking to the community, this is an important amenity. And, you know, I think what you presented is some very interesting ideas. The challenges are how we define the different categories of parks or how we envision those. You know, some of these are like Elephant Park or whatever the right name is. You know, that's a neighborhood park, for example. And then some things like Cottonwood are, I don't know, more regional. I don't know the right terms here. But, you know, I think we need to define those because in the table you had up there with dollar amounts and so forth, you know, and it's a different investment, right, depending on what you're doing? Pocket park versus a community park? But it's something that I think is very, very important to the community. It really falls in line with the term that I've been using over and over and over is asset management replacements, you know? We look at these numbers, and that's what it costs to build it. We have maintenance costs every year, but at some point in time, and you know better than I, five, 10, 15 years, whatever it is, we'll have to replace it. And so, you know, whatever we do, we have to be prepared to make an investment and continuing investment in this amenity as long as that is what the citizens want. So part of that is the schedule, and we can't do it all at once. But we obviously have some we have to replace in the near term because of the fire damage. And of course, it always comes down to, you know, what budget priorities. But I look at some of the things that we need to do as an investment in the community. You know, as we look at our fund balances, as we look at the challenges of recovering from the Marshall Fire and some of the other things, this is a priority for me. And so I think you're presenting us with some ideas that are important to me as a council member and to the community. So I thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Kower, also. I think these are really good suggestions. And I agree with both of my council members here that it's an important thing for the community to be investing in. And I personally would be willing to add more to the effort. I like the idea of making the parks have very functional and fun activities for the kids with the slides and the ladders and if you want to do it through rocks, okay. Sorry. But I'm thinking about, well, for the Enclave Park in particular, the play structure did need to be expanded because there were a lot more children living in the neighborhood than there were when the park was first installed. There could have been, on the flat part of the land, a nice grass area for a field for some kind of ball sports or something like that. But there's also a lot of slopes and the access to the ditch and things like that that I would prefer not be grass so that they don't have to be mowed, they don't have to be watered, and have something native that doesn't need a lot of pesticides, things like that. So I'd like to see with all of them... So I'd like, like to see with all of them, if there is a, in the neighborhood parks anyway, a ballpark area. But once you've got that and you've got the place structure, the rest of it can just be, I think, more decorative, more, you know, put a little group of shrubs with a bench, something like that. That doesn't have to be, take so much maintenance. But then also schedule in something long-term for the long-term maintenance and repair of all the parks so that we don't run into the issues we were having with everything falling apart at the same time and no money to fix it.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Um, yeah, this is, this is really fun. I, I think that, you know, one of the things that a city can do, right? That, that citizens can't is, is provide things like that. I was in Mexico not too long ago and talking to someone and they're just like, yeah, we don't, we don't do parks well here. Like, that's just not a thing. You don't have whole areas set aside for communities to just come and enjoy a space for free, right? And so we do parks really well here in general, just that we prioritize them and, and put money into them. Um, and, and those are incredibly important for young families. I know that, um, you know, we, we live right next to Memory Square and so we'd go there and that's the Shady Park. So people would always come like, oh, we, we love, we'd come from all over the city to this one when it's really hot because this is the Shady Park. And there are other parks that have, well, this one has water, this one has a dog park next to it, right? And I, I think, you know, as we're, as we're continuing, as you guys are doing a great job, thinking about the purpose of the different parks and that one park doesn't necessarily need to solve everything. Like people really do go to parks for certain things. But also being mindful of, you know, it, does a park engage, you know, a one-year-old, a four-year-old and a seven-year-old? You know, does it engage a four-year-old, a seven-year-old and a 10-year-old in that sense of the, and even the adult, right? How, how do we, um, how do we engage with it? So, you know, having a basketball hoop, but also having a swing for an infant, having the bocce courts at Memory Square, but also having, you know, um, really thinking about whole families and communities being able to experience it at one time in many different ways. And so I definitely think that combination of turf and play and other, other amenities is super important. And the bigger the space, the more opportunity you have, like Community Park, lots of opportunities for different uses. The gazebo's and, and the rentable spaces, right? And the reservable spaces and, and, and those kind of things. So I think you guys are doing a great job and I do think, kind of kind of echo my colleagues. Everything costs money and we can't say yes to everything, of course. But I think this is one of those areas where, um, it is a really, really good investment of money because it's an amenity that creates community, right? A, a place where people are coming together naturally is, is super important. So I think this is one of those, this is one of those places where our money is well spent.
Thank you. Councilmember Lay?
Two points really. One is, uh, kind of echoing and, and building on what Councilmember Dickinson just said, which is, you know, these are places that really make or help to define communities. When we asked some people whose houses burned to come back to Louisville, we had, we didn't have them come to City Hall. We had them come to Community Park because that's a gathering place. And I think it's even more important, um, as we're rebuilding the part of the city that we, um, we take that into account. And I love the sorts of things that you're, you've suggested here. So, um, I think that's good. I think we can do a lot with building community through the, the built space. Another thing, I, I've become aware of some research recently, um, which is a little bit disturbing. And it has to do with inclusiveness in the outdoors. That outdoor spaces have been in our country's history notoriously hostile places for, um, many groups of people. I won't go into the whole, uh, uh, history of that except to say that one group that I want to make sure we, we really are, are very careful to, uh, think about are kids and adults who are disabled, uh, for one reason or another. That, um, sometimes the way we set things up or, uh, you know, what kinds of trails we use, I mean, all these sorts of things can be inviting or not. And, um, I know that there's a great focus these days on how to do that. And I, I want to sort of make sure that that's something that's, that's there because these, these places are going to be wonderful places for, for people of all backgrounds. But that's one where you can really slip up. And I think making it inviting, making it welcoming for those folks is really a good thing to be mindful of as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I've heard quite a lot of agreement. I'll try to summarize it in a minute. I'll just add some of comments and then we'll take public comment. And just because you have broken this into four sections, I think we'll need to take public comment on each section. And so, um, just to kind of remind everybody of a conversation we had at the end of the year, we really got a lot of public feedback about maintenance of our spaces, whether it was medians or parks. I mean, Sunflower Park that we're talking about here, we got, you know, many dozens of emails about and really great ideas. Like I got ideas from neighbors who thought we could add nature and like bouldering. And they'd sent me pictures of a park in Boulder that has some natural rock features in it that made them excited. Or another person sent a slide because it's on such a slope. So I think, you know, we have gotten a lot of community feedback that we're not meeting the expectation for the level of service. So I really appreciate staff coming forward with a proposal to try to make sure that we are and then getting council direction on how to do that. So I want to thank you for recognizing that we're not where we want to be today and then coming up with a plan on how to get there. Um, one thing that has been positive in the playground replacements is the community outreach. So there have been these neighborhood meetings at the pocket parks and kids have gotten to be engaged and, and make selections. And so we need to keep doing that. I heard, you know, from across the board, um, that we're interested in seeing some of these, you know, nature play, experimental, experiential kinds of things brought forward to us. And we're, we're interested in those coming so we can have a conversation about how it fits into the larger budget. I think that's what I heard people saying. We need to be thoughtful when we bring these plans forward, that they minimize herbicide use, that we can maintain them, um, without having to spray because the community expects us not to use those things and to be mindful of pollinators. And in the design, like are there things that we can do? But we also want to be fire safe and make sure the soil is healthy and things like that. So there's a lot of things to balance there and think about. But I heard a lot of agreement in those things. And so it's not easy, but it's really meaningful work and it can make a really great space for people to enjoy. Um, if, if you don't mind putting back that Lafayette Park again, I just, just, so, um, last fall, I took my nieces there and I taught my niece Alice how to cartwheel on that turf area. And it, it was fantastic. And it took probably 45 minutes before she could do it, but we made it happen. So just wanted to let everyone know now, because of this little park, my niece Alice can cartwheel. Um, so we will take public comment on this. We're just talking about the playground piece right now. Um, we will be talking about, uh, playground, stormwater quality integration, planting beds and medians and then via appia. But for now, we're just going to go ahead and take comments on the playground level of finish, finish and future budget considerations. Any members of the public care to comment on that section? First, we have Sheri Summer.
Sheri, I can see your microphone, but we're not hearing anything. Um, let's just try moving to Cynthia and see if that fixes it or not. Cynthia, can you try talking?
Sure. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. So Sheri, we will come back to you. Go ahead, Cynthia.
Great. Our, our playgrounds and parks are amazing, even if they are ready for upgrades. So thank you. Just really briefly, I wanted to mention art and history, um, with the playgrounds. Sound, um, you know, just, um, creativity that way, innovation. I appreciate what Councilmember Brown said about, you know, kind of being creative with the natural terrain and what, um, Councilmember Lay said about inclusiveness. But we, I think it's wonderful by, uh, the art center that there's a history stand of, and that's good for kids too, the playgrounds to say, what is the history of these buildings and, and these areas? So thank you very much. I just include art and history.
Thank you. Next, we have Sheri Summer. Sheri, it looks like you're muted on your end now.
Let's see.
Yes, it worked.
It worked. Is it still working?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, Sheri Summer, 910 South Palisade Court. And I also like to second the more nature oriented playgrounds. Getting away, I guess, plastic is really easier to maintain, but it's pretty static. And, um, I noticed during COVID, there were many children who liked to go, um, make teepees by the river and do other, you know, other more, um, free form play. And so I like, uh, Councilmember Dickinson's comment that different parks could have different personalities. And so I'd like to advocate for someplace, something like that at Cottonwood Park. And so we're talking about the landscaping, the native plantings later. Is that correct? Or is this together with this?
You have three minutes to tell us technically anything you'd like to tell us.
Okay, great. So I think that it's great to have native plantings. And to kind of follow up on Cynthia's comment, to make it educational, to make that part of the, um, park so that parents, for example, can learn something about native plantings, can get ideas for, um, landscape, that kids will learn more about pollinators. And, um, you could have a sensory garden as well. Like I, there used to be one outside the Boulder Library where soft plants and plants that smell nice and grasses that make sound. So I just really would like to encourage you to include native plants as an educational and aesthetic feature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. First, I'd like to say that, uh, my kids and I, uh, we've been to Cottonwood Park a couple times since it reopened. And they've had a lot of fun there. And the park has been super busy, so it seems like it's really popular. As the council can imagine, uh, I am very much in favor of naturalizing and rewilding portions of our parks, uh, as was mentioned in the staff presentation. You know, at the parks, I'm not advocating for eliminating all turf altogether, um, right? I think some of the turf is good, right? Because people use it for various forms of recreation. But I would like to see us set aside some of the land area in parks as natural habitat and plant those preferably with native species. Um, you know, perhaps maybe at the edges or near detention ponds or drainways or other places where people are not too likely to use it as a place for recreation. And if there are concerns about, uh, fire resistance in, in those plantings, there are some nice, uh, recommendations out there for how we could plant native species which are, uh, resistant to fires. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark Cathcart.
Set up too quick. Thank you, Mayor, um, city council staff. I'm just totally envious. I used to refer to, um, North End as the redhead stepchild of Louisville. I think it's time to bring it back. We don't have a single toddler swing, a single swing. Not a park, not a pocket park. We don't have a single swing for nearly 300 families between Wanaka Lake and Cottonwood Park. It's not clear that there's anything in the Kestrel development. So I, you know, the Heckler Lake open space would be good, but as the lake continues to evaporate and disappear, it's kind of, you know, not so much. Um, so when I see other neighborhoods that have got four parks within half a mile, I'm left scratching my head. I know there's not much city-owned space up there that you could put a park on. I understand that this, for the prior city councils let Markell build Phase 1 and Phase 2 without proper parks because Michael doesn't like them. I know he doesn't like them because when the plans went up for Blue Sage to Lafayette, I went lobby'd for a park to be built there and Lafayette let it slide as well. So there really isn't a single toddler swing. We're not talking about serious parks. There is nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. And that will take us to the next section of comment unless there are any other council comments on this part for now. Thank you, Director Kaur. Are you clear on the first part? And City Manager Davis, are you clear on the first part? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm clear that after 10 years of presentations is the first one I've done that's really fun. That's what I. It is fun stuff. This is great feedback. Okay, we're going to move on to stormwater quality management. So in 2019 and 2020, the staff began an effort to look at stormwater quality. Um, we had previously looked at a stormwater management plan of the detention pond maintenance out there and taking care of the, the conveyance systems. But a lot of those systems are, um, dated. So you have concrete trickle channels, um, outlet structures that, you know, hold water back during a storm from a flow perspective, but they don't necessarily offer water quality, um, as they're releasing. And so we started looking at what are all these different things to try and maybe renaturalize our stormwater system, add features in our existing ponds for water quality. Through that, we also received a grant from CDPHE for, uh, $200,000 towards water quality. And we had incorporated into the stormwater, uh, fee that's on your monthly bill, a stormwater quality program. So that's slowly been accumulating money with about a half a million dollars or approaching that, um, for this endeavor. Just because of various things with COVID and turnover, we hadn't really checked in with council yet. But we're about to do some parks where there could be some synergies. I've just talked about a lot of different things that you can do. And there's a table in the presentation you can go back to and reference on different tools. But again, we're talking about water quality. Uh, we had previously talked about planting more trees for heat island effects and stormwater, soaking that stormwater in and healthy ways using the landscape. Uh, so just talking with council a little bit, I think this is the biggest check-in is we can go into these places. We can do these water quality improvements, like create habitat, maybe synergize with the parks for nature play. That can look aesthetic. But you also may bring, uh, even though you, in this picture, this is rec center pond area, standing water is there now. But you may increase different things around different nuisances. There may be perceptions around that. So we just kind of wanted to check in with all of you. Uh, we have some pilot projects we'd like to move forward on. Uh, one of those is Enclave. They talked about having like a turf area, but then have a natural around it. Uh, Enclave happens to have the playground and then there's a concrete trickle channel that goes right through it. If you go out there right now, it's got debris in it. And once all the houses rebuild, it'll have standing water in it probably. Uh, but we have an opportunity that we could go in there and contribute these funds to naturalize that area and maybe do a nature play playground together. And these things can synergize. And so now you're using different funding sources to, to meet your goals. Uh, other areas that may not be parks related, this is over by the movie theater, uh, diverging diamond interchange area, just the general detention ponds. Uh, you can use that to increase the water health over there and the aesthetics at the same time and an area that's retail and kind of a gateway to the city. So there's just another angle where this program can provide synergies. These are different areas where we had proposed pilot areas. In your packet is the entire stormwater quality management, uh, report per se. So you can go into those details, but we kind of scattered things around town where it looked like there were synergies. Or perhaps there was a lot of runoff from the streets into some of these areas. So there could be a really good effect on, um, the best bang for your buck on water quality. So I'll stop there. Again, this is just like a quick check-in to kind of see what you think. Is this a good value to you? Is this how you want to use your money? Is the direction you want to go?
Thank you. So, um, I don't know if everybody i- is aware, but the governor appointed me to serve on the Mile High Flood District for a small community in Boulder County and then reappointed me, so I must have been doing something right. And so we sit, we have presentations and the flood district, if people don't know, collects a property tax from everyone in the district to maintain and, um, care for our floodwaters and, um, prepare for floods. And they have advanced warning systems and do all kinds of things. Maintenance is part of it. And, and so once a month, we meet and we look at projects throughout the region and it has. made me very envious at times to see some of the cool things people are doing with stormwater management, being able to use the space for multiple purposes, for like education and like community investigation, children playing and things like that, and really making the areas more functional for wildlife and better for soil health and better for water quality. Some of the neighborhoods that were built, you know, in the 80s in Louisville, used the technology that was contemporary at the time, but it's really not what's done anymore. And so I'm personally very supportive of modernizing our stormwater consistent with what the plan proposes, but really taking the opportunity to provide a different experience to customers. And then also, it's a, I think we saw, you know, a few years ago when the flood district stopped mowing, that people just had a lot of questions about like, why are things changing? And so I do think we need to do a lot of engagement and outreach in this area. And sure, we're communicating. But like the example you showed around the rec center, lots of community members have ideas for that space. We get a lot of feedback on that space. It's been planned two or three times since I've lived in town what to do with that space. But I think, you know, there are opportunity areas like this all around. The Girl Scouts did a cleanup day that I participated in picking up trash in those areas. And there, when you really get down into it, there's a lot of trash, there's a lot of waste, it's not being used by the public, it's not particularly good for water quality or flooding. So I think we have a tremendous opportunity in this area, and I love the idea of starting to chip away at it one place at a time.
Other comments? Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kurt, for this wonderful presentation. I have a couple of questions. Looking at this picture, this does not look at all like the ditch that's going through Enclave Park. The Enclave ditch is concrete and goes underground at both ends. I mean, it comes from underground and leaves underground, has been a wonderful location for wildlife. Raccoons, skunks, many critters have built inside the drainage areas. And the kids have a great time playing in the puddle and, you know, doing their kids splashing and a lovely time. But it would create a heat island where a natural one would not. But then on the other hand, the natural one might be negative in the case of a fire, if the, all of the vegetation and trash and everything dried up and was a wick through the neighborhood. So I'm actually not envious at all of your position in deciding what you're going to do with this stuff. But I am really interested in preserving as much water as we can, as fresh water, as stormwater. Water is going to become more and more of an issue in the area. And so whatever we can do to save it, preserve it, clean it, do whatever, I'm happy to help out.
Councilmember Dickinson. Anybody on this side of me? Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I fully support sort of modernizing our stormwater infrastructure. And I think about some of the comments the mayor made around habitat and sort of the natural, like, you know, using these areas to, for a more natural look. And I think one of the first things that we had to do when I was on council unfortunately was eliminate access for dogs at the community park pond there, because it was based on reclaimed water and the state made us shut it down. And what I've noticed over the last two years is that the pond has really kind of, or well, until we had to drain it, but anyway, the habitat, like the cattails and things have come, and it's become kind of a, you know, a bit of a nice feature, even though I'm still disappointed that the dog feature is no longer there. So, you know, I think about areas like that. I think the area that you highlighted near the park and ride there on sort of 42, not 42, on McCaslin, excuse me, that's COVID brain right there, that really is, anyway, these are going to be positive developments. And I appreciate you sort of thinking about ways to make these look sort of nicer, more natural, and also maybe more productive for the community.
Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director. I appreciate your forward thinking on this. You know, I think we as a city have an environmental responsibility about stormwater. And I think that's, that's what I'm, that's the theme I'm hearing more than anything in this. I think that's very, very important. The fact that we have some funding available and as you point out in the, or as reported, what's in the report is other funding sources if we have plans to do things. So there's no question, I support this. You know, water is very precious, and it's our responsibility to appropriately channel and use stormwater. So I fully support it. Thank you, Mayor.
And so we will take public comment on this stormwater portion. Any members of the public have input on the stormwater section of the discussion? Seeing none. Any other council feedback on this portion? City Manager Davis, do we need to give any more feedback or clarify the direction?
No, I think we're good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Going to get into medians and planting beds citywide. In 2018, there was kind of a median renovation master plan, a lot of high-level concepts on how mainly arterial corridors like McCaslin and Via Appia, South Boulder Road Cherry, could look or should look over time. And then 2019 and 2020, the project management staff within the city undertook creating plans for a median renovation plan. Unfortunately, COVID hit, and as that design was ready to come talk to council, budget cuts were made, and that did not move forward. Fast forward to present day, we've had the Marshall Fire, and we're moving forward to heal from that. And part of that is healing areas of public planting beds and medians that have burned. Some priority areas around like McCaslin and Via Appia, some smaller areas over on Dillon, around St. Andrews, need restored. We've got about $300,000 in our budget right now. And I think we're just checking in with city council as we move forward on the fire recovery, and then also starting to chip away at the medians of what that should look like. You know, I think as preparing for this presentation, things we heard was fix irrigation systems in the medians and beds where they've gotten old. So take care of what you already have. Where we have trees, ash trees, whatever kind of tree, if the trees are starting to slowly die or disease, at least go in and replace where we don't have trees. Start there, where there's gaps where trees need replanted, and then slowly have a plan to phase out the older trees and phase in newer trees. There's concerns of just going in and taking all the trees out and then having a lot of young trees. And so there's a stark contrast from the mature canopy that we have now. We've always also heard things about xeriscave versus color versus some other idea that might be out there. At a minimum, we know the medians need water. It may just come down to how much water you apply, what type of plantings. We've definitely heard a lot of just opinions on how like the end caps should look. And so we just want to get your feedback on that. And it's kind of a straightforward start here. So just would love to hear where you're at today in the current climate and what you expect moving forward.
Thank you. Not seeing any hands shoot up. So I'll just sort of start by saying where I think council direction has been. Obviously, this council hasn't had an opportunity to have a discussion, so we can take it any way we would like to. But we have, over the last several years, this has been laid out, given direction a few times, and it's been consistent. So I'll just sort of reiterate what I think the current version is. And then if council members want to amend that, we absolutely can. So we've heard from community members that not just the medians, but the edges of the roadways are in poor condition. We got a lot of feedback from the community about Washington and the state of things and the cobble and just how that's looking. There are a lot of areas where we have cobble, and it seems that we need to come up with a proactive plan on how we want to address those areas, given that we don't want to use herbicide and pesticides. We need to think of something. And we've gotten a lot of feedback from people that they still want impervious services. And so I think that means, you know, not concreting over everything. The current direction from council, I believe, is to fix our irrigation systems because while we do want to have very low water use, we value the trees and the medians, and so that takes some water. So we want to be mindful of water use, but we'll need to fix our current irrigation system. We need to add trees because we know ash borer is going to continue to take trees out over time. And we don't want to remove all the trees at once. So there are existing trees we know will die over time, but we need to phase out the replacement rather than cut them all down at once. It's just, it will be too stark to have them all gone. We've gotten a lot of feedback from community members about pollinator pathways. And there's one community member that worked on water and things for many, many years. And so each time we've talked about the medians, we've been reminded that if we can transition, if we are redoing medians, if we can transition to sumps instead of humps, it keeps the water from running, you know, off into the street and that it can water the plants more effectively. So that's something that we're always reminded of. I think we need to think about in all these conversations, how we're going to maintain things over time. So when we do replace things, we need to go to things that take less intense maintenance when we can. And we've heard a lot from community members about using native plants when we do those pollinator pathways. And then just this is new information. So that's sort of where I think we have been and the direction we'd like staff to run with. And then new for tonight, there was an article in the paper today, I don't know if everybody saw it, on Cool Boulder. They're doing a program to reduce heat island effect, really work on the tree canopy, mitigate, you know, a lot of runoff and things like that, and incorporate some of the things we've been talking about. It seems like there might be resources, because it's really a mix of government and nonprofits in the area that are working on that. So it might be an opportunity to get some synergy there and work on that program to expand it out to like a Cool Boulder County idea and use some of the resources that they are already bringing to the table and the technology. Any other council input? Mayor Protam Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for those comments. In the presentation, you have areas of clarity. So I'm just going to start there. It's okay. You know, I think that one of the things that the mayor mentioned was irrigation, you know, in the irrigation system and a lot of the medians and streetscapes and so forth just really hasn't been maintained. And to me, that's asset management. But asset management also includes the plantings and the trees and all those kind of things. So much along those lines, the mayor's talking about, I can't imagine non-irrigated areas when we start talking about medians and so forth. I don't know what would ever grow, because those would be very, very hot areas. I do lean towards xeric more than anything else. You know, I think that we are in, as you well know, a drought phase. Who knows how long that will last? Is there another 10, 20 years? We don't know. So I think we need to lean towards things that use as little water as possible. And xeriscave still means irrigation, in my opinion. But to overuse a term, I'm going to go back to asset management. We need to be inventorying, you know, all of these medians, streetscapes and so forth, and have them on a plan for maintaining them as well as reinstalling them over time as some of these, whether it's trees or whatever the xeriscave plantings are, they do go through a life cycle, and we have to be aware of that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. And I will add to Mayor Protam's comments. I also think xeriscaping the medians is a good idea. My biggest concern with medians has always been the line of sight, particularly on hills. If you're driving north on McCaslin, for example, even the tree in the median can block your view of cars coming down the hill. And so that's a big caution for me. Xeriscaping is wonderful. I like that idea very much. I would actually prefer more trees on the sides of the road that would then grow large and shade the road, but from the side where it's got a little bit healthier growing environment. And then xeriscaping something low in the medians.
Councilmember, I thought I saw, Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks. Yeah, I agree with most of what the mayor said and what I've heard from everybody else. I find that, you know, again, when we talk about budget, I think this was one of those things that came up, like, you know, these poorly maintained medians brought to you by COVID. Like, it seems like a lower priority for me overall. And so I'm really curious about, you know, what we can do in the short term that's really important and is going to help preserve the trees we have and set us up for success down the road, and what things we can put off for a little while till we really understand our budget and our reserves and where we are that, again, for me, and this is later in the process, but, you know, this is not a place where I want to prioritize our money. And yet, at the same time, I do get that it is important, and I like the ideas that are coming through. And I don't disagree with any of the direction we're headed. And again, like just some of these little things, I couldn't tell what it was at first, but then that enormous pickaxe in that one picture, like, oh, like even, you know, art on the medians, you know, something, I mean, making an interest. And I think these things are fantastic. But again, I'm not going to say that we should prioritize art on the medians when we're still trying to figure out other things. So really excited about the stuff you have here. And again, I agree with the direction we're headed. And just curious, when we get to the budget conversation, what we can afford.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important that we maintain our medians, but that we, and that, and everything that the Mayor Protam was saying earlier about moving to xeric, making sure that the trees are well-maintained, making sure that the plants are, you know, low-water, native, promote pollinators, and then making sure that the irrigation systems are well-maintained because we will still need those. So those would be, that would be my general direction on this. And I think it's in agreement with what other folks are saying.
Councilmember Ley.
Thanks. Really good comments. I tell the story of going, bring my daughter back from college where we were going and having some ice cream. And I said, stop the car. And she just hit the brakes. And I said, that is a gorgeous median. And I realized just how long I've been in this job. But, you know, I use that only because they make, they make a city beautiful and can. So I think, I think spending the money is well worth it. I think, I'm trying to remember where beautifying the city was in our results of our surveys of community, but I think it was pretty high, if I'm remembering, pretty high on the list. I'd have to look back at it. So, you know, yeah, we have a lot of priorities. But again, I'm looking at a city that is rising from the ashes. And we do need to be mindful of how much things are going to cost, obviously. We need, I'm very much interested in making sure we can maintain whatever we have, and we don't have a bunch of dead stuff that looks really good for a year, and then everything goes to pot after that. But I, you know, I think we're on the right road here. And those are some of the concerns that I think I have. They're not that much different than those that the others have mentioned. I think all are really prudent to keep in mind.
Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. One other thought that just came to me, and that's the number of trees that were lost in the fire that were in medians or along the roads, particularly along McCaslin. I know there were several. And they are also ash trees, or at least a lot of them are ash trees. We personally lost an ash tree in our front yard. From the fire, the bottom of the tree is dead, and the top of the tree, we were told, is full of emerald ash boers. So they're having a wonderful feast on our dead tree. So if you could eliminate... So if you could eliminate replacing an ash with an ash, that would be good. But that's my only comment. And can we get any kind of reimbursement, state or federal, whatever, for fire damage for all the trees that we've lost in the parks and the medians?
I assure you, we will try to get reimbursement on every single thing, Councilmember Fahy. And then it's a matter of if we do actually get reimbursement. But we are trying to get reimbursement and funding for each thing.
Great. Thank you.
And so we'll take public comment on this section. Any members of the public care to comment? Sheri Summer. It looks like you're muted on your side, Sheri. We will circle back and see if we can correct this issue. Next, we have Cynthia Corn.
First, I just wanted to compliment the Parks Team. Through the pandemic, I've been incredibly impressed with a city that is going, was going through a shift to less herbicides and pesticides and going through a pandemic and hiring challenges. And it made me, and it still makes me smile to see dandelions and weeds throughout Lewisville. I never thought in my lifetime that I would see Lewisville go natural and more natural. So kudos. And we have a lot of citizens who are willing to help. So I would go back to the fire areas being, I would gently suggest the fire areas being the top priority for our Parks Team. I believe City Manager Durbin talked about kind of the McCaslin via Appia corridor being an emotional kind of place. So I think, I think that, speaking for myself and other people I talk to, we know that the, you know, Parks Team doesn't have an easy job and they get a lot of latitude from the citizens and will show up and pull weeds and help as opposed to thinking we're going to go back to the golf course level manicure level that we were pre-COVID or pre-change in our more natural strategies. So we're going through change, a lot of change, and then we're recovering from the fire. So that was my theme. Let's focus on the fire areas. We're going through change and continue to look to the community for support. We appreciate our Parks Team. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Cathcart?
Thank you again, Mayor. City Council, Mark Cathcart, 1763 Sweet Clover Lane, that neighborhood. So I really don't know how the rest of the neighborhoods are run here in the city, under what terms they were developed, but at least it seems to be a surprise to most of the North End HOA-controlled owners that the tree medians in the neighborhood belong to the city and that the HOA was required as a part of the GDP to maintain those. That may be what happens everywhere. I have no idea. But that's what happens in ours. In Phase 1, they have traditional, that's the area north of King Supers, they have traditional sprinkler systems. In Phase 2, the builder was required to put in Netafilm tree medians. They are a total unmitigated disaster. The tree outside my house has been replaced four times. The HOA is spending tens of thousands of dollars to replace trees in your treelons or our treelons. The HOA is going to do a demo area where we're going to take up the grass and replace the Netafilm. It's early days yet, but it was discussed at the last meeting. So I have a piece of advice and a request. The piece of advice is before you agree to a low-water solution, find somewhere here where it actually works, you know, in a new development. Maybe ours isn't too shallow, the tree medians are too shallow, but the trees just flood, right? Between the concrete sidewalk and the road, it just floods. So the trees just die, the roots rot. It's a disaster. We literally have spent over 30,000 replacing trees in my phase alone, which is Phase 2. And so Netafilm, not a fan of that. And then secondly, my request is that when we do get organized, since it's the city tree median, we will need approval from the city. And if there's anything you can do to help with the funding, just to get, you know, the demo areas built, they're going to be about $8,000 per tree median. We do plan to do native planting and to get rid of the grass because obviously the grass has all the, all the normal problems that grass has, not to mention the gas blowers, which drive me mad. So when that happens, I'd like to think we could get your support to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Don.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
93557, I'd like to urge the city to pay particular attention to safety and maintaining safe viewing returns and the right in their vegetation planning for medians on corners. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Josh Cooperman.
Hi, this is Josh Cooperman. I live at 216 Griffith Street. I'd like to make a few comments regarding medians. First of all, I must say I really liked essentially all the comments I heard from City Council regarding medians tonight. Anyway, I'd like to emphasize that I think one of the first things we should do with the medians is for all those medians that have turf grass, we should eliminate the turf grass. You know, it's not serving any purpose there and yet we mow it. And so if we eliminated it, we could stop mowing it and we could replace it with native plants or something similar to provide some actual nice habitat for pollinators and so forth. Yeah. So generally, as I've, as I've said before, I'd like to see the medians planted with native plants. Hopefully, those could be low-maintenance and they can hopefully also be drought-resistant. I'm perfectly happy to see xeriscapes. If we do xeriscaping, I would like that we don't just put a lot of rocks there. You know, the rocks, they don't grow and they just absorb heat. And then some people think that we need to weed them and then they like to spray them. So, yeah, if we do xeriscaping, we should xeriscap with native species that we actually provide some habitat in the medians. I do also like trees in the medians. You know, of course, the trees require more water, but they do provide shade and so they can, to some extent, mitigate the heat island effect of our roads. And I also recognize that, you know, we shouldn't just put trees anywhere. We should make sure that they don't block views or traffic. Finally, I'd just like to say that I know we've been talking about our existing medians. Some of our existing medians are just asphalt. And I think it would be great if we could transform those asphalt medians into actual medians that have vegetation, native vegetation on them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment on this part, I just, I'll ask council if we can focus in a little bit. I actually think some of our comments are cross-purpose. And so I just want to focus in on topic areas and make sure we have agreement before we move on. So is there consensus that if we have irrigation systems that are at the end of the life, we need to prioritize replacing them? All right. And so just stopping there for a moment, our current budget is $300,000. Is that adequate to replace all of our irrigation systems that are at the end of life?
Likely not.
So we need to have a conversation about, you know, getting those projects done and give us estimates on the cost for our irrigation systems. So we need to see that information so that we can do a budget amendment and address the irrigation issues.
Okay.
Staff has put on the screen sort of the burn areas. Is there consensus that we need to see a contract in front of City Council to remove the burned and destroyed material and replace it with something that's low-water but not no water and that's mindful of the maintenance that it will take ongoing? Is there consensus on that? Yes. Okay. I think there were some, I felt like there were some conflicting bits of direction around pollinator pathways and xeric landscaping and things like that. So do we want to flesh that out a bit more at this point? People are generally in favor of native species and things that are flowering. We're getting good. So far, so good. I guess, I guess another area, you know, we see this picture of a planting bed here. There are also planting beds in many of the parks that we haven't addressed yet this season. Is council in agreement that we need to see a contract to get caught up on the maintenance of the planting bed areas? Okay, there's consensus on that topic. Director Koer, do you feel like there are other areas in this planting bed and median expectation discussion that we need to give direction on tonight? The trees, I guess, is one other area. I think there was consensus from everyone's comments on the trees, that we value the benefit of trees and the medians and that we need to start adding more because we realize they're dying. And then slowly take out the dying ones over time. See a lot of head nodding. Mayor Protam Maloney?
You know, I think that Councilor Fahy had, you know, hit on something I think is a concern in some of the sightlines. I know it's a problem with some of the intersections on Cherry, for example. So, you know, I know no one wants to get rid of trees, but if they are causing a danger to pedestrians and bikes and traffic, we need to consider removing those as part of this. So I know that's not a popular thing to do, but I think it's an important thing to do.
And I think we've, I think council's supported that before, like at crosswalks and intersections. So I think that's consensus with the previous direction as well.
And my concern was moving them to the side of the road rather than in the median, just for sight and for also...
Can we have some more discussion on that? Are councilmembers generally in favor of not having trees in the medians? I'm not supportive of that. I think the trees in the middle of the road create an environment that on these roads, we won't be able to recreate for decades and decades and decades on the sides of the road. So that's why I'm, and I just think the heat island effect and the feeling in the area, I talked to a lot of people along via Appia where the Catalpa, I think their Catalpa trees are that were proposed to be removed and people were very much not in favor of that because it's, it will just leave the area of town where our mobile home park is with no trees and it just concreted over. So I just, I'm not supportive of that, but it's fine if the rest of the group has a different opinion. Mayor Protam Maloney?
Well, I, well, I'm going to go back to my comments. I think there has to be the appropriate balance. When you have a stretch of road and it's not near any intersection, certainly that's a fine idea. But when it's within 100 or 200 yards of an intersection, where you have a crosswalk, that's a different story, in my opinion. So...
So you're supportive of where there are sightline issues, removing them, but leaving them is there?
Yes. Otherwise, I'm okay with them in the middle, right? As long as it, you know, safe.
Is there consensus sort of on that proposal? It looks like a lot of head nodding around Mayor Protam Maloney's description. Director Koer, are we missing any areas?
No. The only thing I'd suggest is there's obviously a lot of good opinions on this topic. It seems like we need to help each other define, like, simple circles, like you see on the bottom of this page. Throughout the city, we define, much like I color-coded the parks early in the presentation of, hey, this area is going to be low-level plantings because of sightlines. This area is going to be trees and turf. This area is going to be dandelions. This is going to be xeric. Everyone can look at it and say, yeah, we agree how this is going to work out. Or no, we want to tweak it. But I think we have to carry this to that step. I understand you want to move fast, but it's pretty much been clear as mud about what the treatment should be with all the comments. And so I think we just got to continue to define it a little more. I do hear the trees in the median very clear, maybe adding trees on the edges if there's opportunities, maintaining turf and irrigation systems. I still don't quite understand expectations around what portions of the community may want. Dandelions are more natural versus who wants it more manicured? So it just seems that needs to be defined more. And I don't think it's clear for the staff trying to take care of it all right now.
Councilmember Brown?
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Director. I appreciate it. Just, I just want to say that I'm not in favor of removing large trees, except where there's a clear safety issue. I think that, in my opinion, like, the maintaining of trees that we have in the medians is important and people, I think, when I hear from constituents, removing trees is a major concern for them. So I appreciate what Councilmember Fahy is saying about safety and sightlines and I appreciate the Mayor Protam's approach as well, which is sort of a balance. So if there's a safety issue, I definitely want to make sure that that's addressed. But for the most part, I'd like to leave the trees and make sure that we're maintaining them.
So let's see if we can have a little more discussion on the point that was raised as like a foggy area and maybe we can give direction on how to come back and resolve it. If we can't, my concern is studying this. Again, we've hired two consultants to come up with exactly what you've described and I feel like council has given direction. So I just, I'm hesitant to say, well, let's walk away without giving a little more discussion around this. So my perception of what is being proposed is that in areas where we try to just do cobble or rock, it doesn't end up pleasing anyone because it becomes filled with prickly lettuce. And so that's not what anyone's looking for. So we need to come up with things that our staff can maintain on a reasonable budget. And so my understanding is that, like, some types of low-water, low-irrigation grass are some of the lowest maintenance things because they can have some dandelions and clover and mixes of things. They could be native grasses, it could be buffalo grass and other things, and it has a look and feel that doesn't take very much water and just takes mowing. And it helps us with runoff and things like that. And it doesn't take much herbicide. So it sort of balances those things that we've heard from people. The only one it doesn't tick off is reduce, eliminating the mowing. So I think if we do have ways that we can add native plants that we don't have to mow, I think people would be in favor of that. But I don't think we've presented with an option that accomplishes that in any of the consultant reports that we've ever seen.
I think what I'm suggesting is I'm committing to with internal staff to do some simple highlighting. I don't want to study anything. I get that we want to make action happen. So we'll highlight things and bring it back to you and say, this is what we heard, this is how we're going to do this. You can say thumbs up. We'll say this is how much it costs, and we go and do it.
Does that sound okay to everybody? That's perfect.
All right.
City Manager Davis?
Yes, thank you. And, you know, what we came forward with this evening was these specific areas. The $300,000 in the budget right now was part of the sort of Parks Maintenance Booster that you all put into the budget for 2022 for improved maintenance. So we're looking at some specific sites. I mean, we can also proceed with some of the work in these areas. This is replacement of the burn areas. And then you'll be able to get some visuals and experience of what, you know, how we're moving forward with these recommendations and be able to see how those might be applied across the system in some of the different, you know, medians throughout the city.
Thank you. Just, so are we in a good place on this part of the discussion tonight? I see a lot of head nodding. And then just looking to staff, are we in a good place on this part of the discussion tonight?
Yes, I think we have, I think we have some clear direction for these pieces. I do want to mention that two things that I heard about replacement of irrigation systems for all medians. I don't know that's something that we will accomplish in this season. You know, we have to understand all medians across. We're looking at these medians right now. And so we'll get started on that. That's our goal, but just to be clear.
Thank you very much. And I think that direction was just, we need to understand where the irrigation is at the end of life. So I don't have any idea if that's all medians or if that's 10% of the medians. I don't have enough information to know that. I don't have enough information to know that. Councilmember Fahey.
I'm just wondering if based on our public's comments that we could do one or two medians as an example, see how it works, and then if it's something that, you know, things survive and, or thrive, great, we'll do it there and there and there also. And if it doesn't, then we're not out, you know, the whole city's worth of medians on something that's not functional.
Yeah, we can dip our toes into this.
I just want to be clear that that doesn't mean we wouldn't maintain all the other medians. You're just talking about the capital project, but we would still maintain all of the medians to the expected level.
Same with what we have, pilot projects in other areas.
Thanks.
Right.
So the next and last topic on this agenda item is provide guidance, feedback on current importance and level investment on Via Appia TMP improvements.
All right, let's bring this home. So Via Appia improvements, this came out of the Transportation Master Plan. And essentially when we looked at the Transportation Master Plan, you can see the main roads of Louisville being South Boulder Road, McCaslin, Dillon, Highway 42. We've already talked about one of those tonight. But then you have all these roads in the middle. And the plan really looked at all these roads in the middle, like the Cherries, the Pines, Via Appia being one. And so how do we make those more friendly for bikes and people and safer? And so out of that, we took a look at Via Appia. We started with, speaking of pilot projects, Pine Street, and applied those treatments to Cherry. And what we found is we've done that, is complaints have gone down around safety or concerns of speeding. Doesn't necessarily mean people's behaviors have changed, but we've given everyone kind of their own lane, per se, that is comfortable. And so this is about creating comfort. It's not about autos versus cars versus bikes. We have to serve everybody. And so all we're trying to do now is wrap up what we've done with Pine and Cherry and apply that context to Via Appia. So we looked at Via Appia, and we looked at the traffic counts on it, and that's always a worry of, hey, well, we, you can't take it from two lanes to one lane, there's too much traffic. It's within the realm, as we've said on other streets as well, where you can do that. You can kind of see, this is just some of the Strava data where you've got some white lines at the rec center, a couple of the major intersections over there by Sage Brush where we've got the flashing beacons that we installed, and then over here by Cottonwood or the Lake Park. You've got all these areas where you have these connections, and so that obviously is going to make those more comfortable because you're crossing less lanes. We've also talked just about visibility sightlines for coming out of intersections. I hope you've noticed on these other streets, especially Cherry, now as you're trying to pull out, you're only looking at one lane of traffic coming at you, so that helps with safety for the automobiles. So essentially, we've designed something you already know that we can apply to Via Appia. It's got different levels of options. Those options are, we can just do re-striping, we can do re-striping plus, we eliminate the right turn lanes, we can do striping, eliminate right turn lanes, add really nice medians where you have the median refuge in the middle. And then you can go even further, as we've just talked about medians, add medians in that are planted where you don't have them, like for instance, from South Boulder Road to Via Capri. And then you can also replant trees that are missing, like we just talked about, and possibly better maintenance and do the irrigation upgrades that we talked about. So when we add all those things up, it comes up to about $3.5 million. We had $1.3 million budgeted in our TMP first steps line item, and that first steps line item was also envisioning to try and accomplish things like doing some bicycle routes downtown, some other smaller things. But ultimately, this project, as we have applied what we've learned and today's costs and the community's expectations, it's just kind of added up like other projects have. We have submitted for a Dr. Cog tip subregional funding, so we've submitted for $3.2 million roughly through Dr. Cog to get support on this. Deputy Center, Deputy City Manager Davis can add to the feedback we've received from those conversations.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, this was, this was perceived as a pretty competitive project. We did sort of the first round of just ideas, and we submitted for State Highway 42, some of the first steps were on State Highway 42, as well as for the Via Appia, and they both got good feedback. And I think really just wanted to know what the interest and appetite for this project within the community was, and I think the fact that we completed Pine with some similar improvements and have gotten really great feedback and response from the community is, makes it more compelling.
And just to build upon that, as with most of these projects, as we move forward, you can still design and bid the whole thing, and then we have add alternates where you kind of have a menu approach at the time you know the real pricing. So I think we're moving forward, full steam ahead with various options for you in the future unless you disagree. And I guess the question is, do you want to apply that context to Via Appia?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Director, and thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I'm very much in favor of right sizing our streets. I think the feedback on, on Pine has been very positive. I think the feedback on Cherry has been very positive, the way that the modifications that have been made there. I think they make it safer for folks, they make, they create greater safety for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. And, and you have the right, the appropriate number of lanes for the amount of traffic that we have. So I'd be very much in favor of pursuing different options that would sort of right size the, the, the lanes for Via Appia and some of the improvements that you were talking about in, in terms of the medians from Via Capri to South Boulder Road. I'd be very interested to look at those as well.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Yeah, I agree with everything that Councilmember Brown just said. It's great that we're looking for, you know, money from Dr. Cog to help us with the project. I would just add a lot of speed bumps. People tend to like the-
Done.
Thanks. Actually, I take that back. I would not add speed bumps to Via Appia.
Mayor Protim Maloney.
Seriously, that was your comment? You know, I, our experience with Pine and Cherry tells me this is probably a good idea, so I agree with my colleagues. And I was skeptical, quite honestly, of those two, but I think that, yes, I was skeptical. I approved the budget, but I was skeptical. You know, and as Councilman Brown said, you know, you know, right sizing these streets, you know, one of the experiences I have on Cherry, because that's where I live, is it's much safer to get across the street. And so, you know, that, that is really important because a lot of kids going to school and, and, you know, people walking their dogs and so forth. So I support moving ahead with this, and I believe the tip process is every four years, is that what it is? Something like that. So this is a window that if it's open, we need to consider taking it. But the, the question I have, is this is right in the middle or right adjacent to burned areas? And is this the right time? I mean, is this something that we could, because if I look at what's in the staff report, it's talking about bidding it in 2023 with construction in the summer of 2023. I'm just wondering, is that good timing in your opinion?
I think we kind of need to wait and see and have more information. We want to finish out the final design, get it to a point where it's ready to bid, and then we can choose the right timing. It, it could be that you're right, we don't want all that construction traffic on top of each other, so maybe we do it in 2024. There's also the construction costs that are going up, so we got to balance that. So let's design it this year, can see where you're at.
I, I think from like a competitiveness standpoint, if we can put that we can execute on it earlier, and then that we're just so nice and flexible that we will put it in a later year, it makes our project more competitive. So if we can leave it in 2023 just for a competitiveness standpoint and then give some direction that we can be a little flexible on the timing, I think it helps.
I, I think that's a good strategy, but, you know, I fully support the concept, even though I was skeptical before, so thank you.
All right, we'll take public comment on this section of the agenda. All right, seeing none, any other council comments? All right, is that clear direction on that portion? All right, thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation, Director Kaur. And so that takes us to our next agenda topic this evening, which is ordinance number 1830, series 2022, an ordinance amending Chapter 13 regarding sewer use regulations. This is our second reading, is advertised in the Daily Camera. I'll open the public hearing and ask council members if there are any disclosures or recusals. Seeing none, we'll have a staff presentation from Director Kaur.
Now we're to the really fun stuff. So we have a wastewater treatment plant that's permitted by EPA through CDPA HE. That permits what quality of water we treat to and release to the creeks. Also, we have an industrial pre-treatment program that regulates the quality of the water that comes into our wastewater plant so that it does not impact the biological process. So you have bugs that treat your wastewater, and if different chemicals or too much residual solids come into the plant, that affects the treatment and affects what goes into the creek. So we have by permit an obligation to manage our users on what they put into our sewer systems. So that's essentially what this ordinance does. As part of that, we get audited every few years by the EPA. They come through and look at all our records and all our files and our ordinances, and they make sure that we're holding ourselves to that obligation and then also staying up to par with current standards. So essentially, what's before you, there's a lot of language in here, but it's taking our kind of custom ordinances from the year, years past and matching it to current EPA language. And it's a lot of its definitions and wordsmithing, not substantial changes to how we regulate. There are some additional languages in here around like grease traps, things that you would typically install at restaurants, because through restaurants, a lot of grease can get into your sewer system, it builds up, that's what causes backups in the sewer system when those things happen, it's typically grease. So that's what's before you, that's kind of the high level around it. I won't get into the weeds of it, but I'm happy to try and answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. That takes us to our first round of public comment on this ordinance adoption. Any public comment on this topic? Seeing none, that takes us back to council questions and comments. I sent in a couple of comments earlier today on the ordinance. I want to thank staff for working on this and making sure that we have a good pre-treatment program also. And just in reading through the document, I actually thought it was very fun to read, so thank you for the fun reading. And I would just like to make two small proposals. And the first is that everywhere that we have said the word superintendent, I would propose replacing it with the phrase city manager or their designee, because a superintendent is a specific job title that we have now, but you never know if we do like a study and we look at pay or pay equity and things like that, we may make a different classification for that title and then our ordinances would be wrong. But if we say city manager or their designee, then it applies to whoever the city manager designates, which at this time would be the superintendent. But in the future, you never know, it could be the Public Works Director or some other person in the organization. And the second change that I'd like to propose is, since I'm making a change, I was, I wouldn't have proposed the second one if I wasn't making the first, but it's to replace centigrade with Celsius. Those are my only comments. Any other council member comments or discussion? Mayor Protim Maloney.
Give me a minute, I want to get back to where I was looking here. So Director Kaur, under the fiscal impact, it says there's no budget impact. Is there, is there a budget impact to businesses? You talked about grease traps and so forth. Is there changes that will be requiring with this ordinance that'll affect businesses?
I don't think there's a budget impact in any of the businesses. There's not really a lot of teeth in here. The only business that would be impacted is if it's a restaurant that does not have a grease trap. It just gives us more teeth in that regard to require them to put in a grease trap, which they need to do anyways because that costs time and money to your system, your staff, and your, ultimately, all your residents. And it's a specific impact by that business. So if there was not a grease trap, we would require it, they would have to put that in.
All right, thank you.
Other discussion from members? Members of the public, you get a second chance to comment as it's an ordinance this evening. Any members of the public here to comment on this ordinance? All right, seeing none, that takes us back to any council discussion? Any further discussion from council members?
I'd like to make a motion, if I may.
Please, Mayor Protim Maloney.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 1830, series 2022.
One second.
Would it be all right if you accepted a friendly amendment to include everywhere that that ordinance says superintendent to replace it with city manager or their designee, and everywhere where it refers to centigrade to replace it with Celsius?
Sure.
Yep.
Thank you. And just because of the pause, I'll comment on the ordinance. The Boltzmann constant and the triple point of water are two critical differences between centigrade and Celsius. And if you look into the history of when it shifted over, they were the same, but they're not anymore. So those of us who care a lot about absolute zero and triple point of water will appreciate this important change. Any other discussion on the ordinance? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask City Clerk Muse for a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Stillsman?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that takes us to Agenda Item E, gun violence prevention ordinances. So these are all before us tonight on first reading, so just a reminder to everyone watching in the audience that on first reading, we don't take public comment. We're setting a public hearing in which we will take public comment. And so on all of these, we'll be setting a public hearing for June 7th. And so it may seem like we go through these quickly, but it's really to set a date so that we can take public comment at a future meeting. So first, we have ordinance number, I would, I move we approve ordinance number 1831, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code banning the sale and possession of assault weapons, large capacity magazines, and rapid fire trigger activators, and establishing a minimum age to possess firearms. This is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing for June 6th, for June 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The next is ordinance number 1832. I move we approve ordinance number 1832, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting the carrying of firearms in certain public places. This is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing for June the 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, I move we approve ordinance number 1833, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code prohibiting open carry of firearms in public places. This is our first reading, and set the public hearing for June the 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second. Sorry.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Next, I move we approve ordinance number 1834, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to require all firearm dealers to post signs at all locations where firearms, firearm transfers take place. This is our first reading, and I'll set the public hearing for June the 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next, I move we approve ordinance number 1835, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to require a waiting period prior to the sale of firearms. This is our first reading, we'll set the public hearing for June the 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. The motion carries. Next, I move we approve ordinance number 1836, series 2022, an ordinance amending Title IX, Article VIII of the Louisville Municipal Code to regulate the possession of unfinished frames and receivers and unserialized firearms. This is our first reading, and we'll set the public hearing for June the 7th, 2022. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. And so just to be clear, we took up Agenda Item E, which included all of those ordinances,